Good evening again. We are here to present and discuss reentry. We have action that we are requesting from you based on updated information that we will be presenting this evening. Next slide. So first, we are happy to discuss that students at our elementary and high schools were in session starting yesterday. These were our students that had not connected or had limited connectivity, as well as our seniors who are in danger of not graduating while we have been in remote learning. Our goal was to bring them back in early to reestablish access to learning. Today, approximately 2,400 students overall were in our schools for connectivity assessments such as KELPA or ACT for our seniors. Dr. Pitch has reported approximately 250 of our seniors have been in session over these past two days. A reminder that middle school students will begin coming in on March 1st, so we will update you on their numbers as well. In a previous board meeting, you approved a hybrid model for reentry beginning on April 5th. Students would attend AA or BB schedule depending on their cohort, while those families who opted to remain remote continue in that learning mode. With this approval, it was stated that teachers would not have to teach simultaneously. As you will see in this presentation, upon further preparation and planning, some needed modifications have become apparent. We are now coming before you to recommend two updated proposals for reentry. A list of pros and cons for each option were provided to you for review. We will highlight some of those this evening. We will be asking for a decision to be made this evening in order for plans to be finalized. One example is nutritional services needs at least four weeks' notice to order food. It's also worth noting that our state legislature is proposing a statute that all students in the state of Kansas will return to school on March 26th. Presented on this slide are the two proposals that we are bringing before you for consideration. The first is to stay with the hybrid option, yet we are proposing a change to how teachers will be teaching with this option. With the updated hybrid model, teachers would teach their AA students in person on Mondays and Tuesdays, while their BB students, who are remote on Mondays and Tuesdays, would livestream into the classroom to receive the same instruction as their AA peers. This is what we mean by simultaneous instruction. Again, we do know that originally it was stated that we would not have our teachers do simultaneous instruction, but we have come to find that this is not a viable option, particularly in our secondary schools. Some of the pros to this updated hybrid model are less students in our schools, students receiving more instruction with the updated simultaneous teaching option than just staying with regular remote, or excuse me, regular hybrid. Our teachers would not have to have multiple preps for their lesson plans for teaching in person, as well as having plans for those students who are remaining at home. While some of the cons to this updated hybrid model include many students may have different teachers from the beginning of the semester, hybrid schedules can be difficult on our families, some of our families may experience connectivity issues and still not be able to access the live instruction, teaching both remote and in-person simultaneously will be difficult for teachers to monitor all learners, and adjustments to when planning times occur may be necessary. With this, however, we have explored hardware options that could assist in teachers facilitating simultaneous instruction, and it is of note that that hardware is costly. The other proposal then that we are, is bringing those students whose family selected the hybrid option back on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Wednesdays would remain a remote learning day, which allows for cleaning to happen on the campuses, as well as the approved early release professional learning sessions. The pros for this proposal are students will receive more instruction versus a hybrid model, accommodations, differentiation, intervention for academic and socio-emotional learning needs are more thoroughly provided, students will be able to connect with their peers in person, it provides more normalcy in the lives of our children, and it offers the ability to meet the needs of our diverse learners. The cons for this proposal are that there will be an increased number of students in our buildings, which may create issues trying to adhere to social distancing, specifically at some of our secondary schools. There are also maybe issues with sanitizing and mitigation strategies in between classes and cohorts, and there may be a need to adjust planning times as to when they occur. What we request is your action on selecting either to remain in the hybrid model with the adjustment of having teachers teach simultaneously, or the four-day in-person model. We have consulted with various departments, building principals, as well as the NEA executive team. After weighing out all possible pros and cons for each option, we are recommending that the board strongly consider the four-day in-person model. We also want to note that for our families who've selected to remain remote, they will still have that option. However, if you do vote to approve our recommendation, we would open up a five-day window for those families who opted to, for remote to go in and change their option if they choose to do so to come back in person.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Scott, for the presentation and for the information. Board members would open up for any questions specific to what was presented tonight. Thank you.
This is Dr. Jaeger. I have a question, and that's concerning one of the issues you brought up with class size. And so have you guys thought of putting a cap on those class sizes? It was explained before that students would essentially follow the same cluster of children, but how can we somehow ensure that there's no overcrowding and really try to adhere to that social distancing that is recommended?
So at our elementary schools, the health department went ahead and stated that our students could be in learning pods, and the schools have adjusted for that. We do realize that this may be an issue more at our secondary schools, depending on the size of the classroom, as well as the size of the students who are supposed to be in that course. And we will rely on our buildings, specifically our principals and counselors and teachers, to come together. If I'm perhaps teaching a class third hour, and I have socially distanced my classroom, like here in the board, and maybe I only have room for 15 students, but my class load is 20, I may have to move my classroom during that period and teach from another classroom that could accommodate that number of students and keep them socially distanced.
We also want to remind the board that at this point, and we know we are opening it up for changes, but at this point, we have approximately 50% of our student population that have selected to be in-person. So we're not, at this point, we do not have the regular-sized classes.
Okay, then my second question is for those who choose to stay in a remote virtual learning, how will that look? So will that look like the teacher in the classroom teaching the same students with the camera there, or will there be different pods of teachers teaching the students that determine, decide to stay virtual? I'm just trying to get how that will look for those 50% who are staying at home.
What we're looking at, Dr. Jaeger, if I am understanding your question correctly, is if we do have families that still choose to remain remote, those students will livestream in and receive the same instruction as their peers who are in-person.
So that's kind of like a blended module. So there's going to be a camera, or they're going to use their computer, and the students will still be able to, you know, come in during the scheduled time. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then lastly, as we think about social distancing and being able to give students this type of four-day schedule, I truly like the four-day schedule because of the continuity. Was there any other thoughts relating to, like, half of those, half of those students coming in, or is it just easier for everyone just to have the full 50% come in?
Well, that actually is both options that are on the table. So with the modified hybrid, we would remain with just half of those students coming in in-person on Monday and Tuesday. The other half would come in on Thursday and Friday. That's what that modified, adjusted hybrid schedule means.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Are there questions from other board members?
Yeah, you mentioned in the presentation SB 235, which our state legislature is going to vote on in March. And for those, unless you've been on another planet, you need to know that they're working hard because they want to bring all the kids back in.
Right.
And, and so if that's the plan, and we're saying that parents still have that other option, do they really have that option?
Well, I think we're not very clear on how they are going to enforce. So when they say, when the legislature proposes the bill that says that all students will be in-person, I'm not very clear, and I haven't heard any explanation as to what options will parents have. But we are, based on what we know the push is, and also on the reality and the recommendations of the health department who have relaxed the guidelines and have come to the board and to us. We still meet weekly to say, you know, it's time to bring kids to school. We have the data that shows that students do not transmit the virus at the rate that it was thought at the beginning. We, that's why we are proposing this second plan, that rather than still keep half of the students or two days a week in and the rest of the week, which would be three days out of the week doing remotely, which we know is not the best for kids, we're saying, knowing that that's the way in which we're moving anyway, let's bring them all in-person, those who have selected in-person. If there is then a legislation that says students will not have the option, then we will have to communicate that to parents. But at this point, we're planning on what we know exists right now, which is parents still have the option.
Okay. And then my second question, for example, the situation at Harmon, where you only have one really math teacher. So how are we going to help those people manage such a large group of kids and teach while they're teaching in and teaching online? Has there been a plan to help them? Because they don't have enough teachers.
Yes, and that's actually, when we are stating that we are exploring those hardware options, that can meet our needs right now with simultaneous teaching. But looking to the future, when we do have vacancies in these hard-to-fill areas, if I am a student at Harmon and there isn't, let's say, a physics teacher, but there is a physics teacher teaching physics at the same hour at Schlegel, I could livestream in as a Harmon student to Schlegel with this hardware and get my instruction at the level it needs to be. We would still have the need to have perhaps a long-term sub in for supervisory purposes, but this hardware could allow us to assist with some of our hard-to-fill, excuse me, hard-to-fill content areas.
And I think, Ms. Page, that that is going to be, you know, how, there were many things that were negative about this pandemic, most of them. But we have realized that it has shown us ways of doing things that we hadn't thought about before. So in the past, before the pandemic, we were tied to the actual people that we had in each building. So we may have a fabulous physics teacher at Harmon and a vacancy with either a substitute teacher or maybe a less qualified teacher teaching that class at another school. Now we realize one of the benefits of this pandemic is we have learned we can do a lot remotely. So if we have this fabulous teacher at one school, why couldn't the other kids stream in that class? And of course, we would have a responsible adult with those students also, but they are getting the actual content and instruction from the highly qualified teacher.
Okay, well, are we making sure we got somebody, I keep hearing that it's going to happen, but have we looked at those scenarios and begin to work on putting someone here and someone there to make sure we cover everything and everyone?
Yes, that has, excuse me, that has been part of our preparation.
It looks like Ms. Tishman on the screen has something that she wanted to share. Sorry. Ms. Tishman, go ahead.
I was just going to add, we are actively working on trying to find some additional subs who are credentialed in the, especially the hard-to-fill areas, so math and science. So we are actively advertising for that right now. So I just wanted to let you know, we are, we are working diligently.
Thank you. Ms. Humphries has a question.
As I've been listening to surrounding school districts, quite a few of them are going back to five-day weeks. Is there a reason we selected a four-day week?
Well, I think the main reason is it's going to be the first wave of students in, and we want to make sure that we still have a day when we can do some of that deep cleaning that may need to happen when all of the kids are in the building.
So we'll still make the required hours for the state?
Oh, absolutely. And Wednesday would still be remote learning for half a day and professional development for half a day. So the hours would not really change for the kids, except for the Wednesday morning would be remote, but they would still have class.
Okay. I was just curious about the difference between the other districts and us doing the four-day.
Ms. Clark, did you have a question? It looked like you had something to share.
I do. I have a couple of questions. What does this mean for the athletes? So I think at one point we had talked about, and forgive me if I don't quote it exactly, athletes that were participating in sports, of course, I thought they couldn't come to school, they can come to class. What does this do? I won't try to quote it because I'll mess it up.
The health department has released that requirement, and they have also released the requirement of having them cohorted.
What was the last part? I'm sorry.
That they, we do not have to cohort them anymore, and meaning that they need to go to all of their classes together. And I think the health department realized that's not feasible for schools, so they are releasing that. And right now, we are waiting to hear also on how flexible the health department is going to be regarding the six-feet distance. So we may have some additional information coming in this week.
Okay. And what does this do for, what does this do for staff? So it kind of goes back to Ms. Page's question, and this is a little bit out of the box, but if we have staff that can't return, already knowing that we already have a shortage of teachers, which goes back to Ms. Tishman's comment, how will we be leveraging staff, or what accommodations will we be giving to staff to make sure? Because I'm sure we will have a nice number of kids that still, their parents still won't want them in the buildings for whatever. So will we be leveraging those staff?
We are working, remember last board meeting, we went through what, how we were doing accommodations. But as you recall, staff has to provide their medical accommodation forms, and then we will look first at the hard-to-fill areas, so that will be math and science, and see what we need to do. So there's still a lot of, you can tell there's a lot of unknowns based on what we're trying to do. But we already know that we have vacancies and hard-to-fill. We know that because we started the year out with vacancies. So that's the easiest place for us to be working through those accommodations.
Okay, so I guess my question is, and we don't have to answer it today, but I guess my question is, overall, how will we leverage those individuals, knowing that we will have students that won't be able to come to, come back into the building? So will we make sure that we're making the best, don't take this word personal, use of our staff, even in these situations? I would hate for a math teacher to, because she can't return, we say, okay, well, we don't need you because that's not our setup, but we do need you.
Right.
Yeah, we are, that's exactly the process we're going through. So the first process is let's, we're trying to identify all the places we know we have openings and try to have solutions for that. And then we will have other issues that will come up, that we'll be working with, you know, building principals, trying to address how we're going to staff those particular areas.
Okay. And I have one more, I have one last comment, and this comment is not meant to be negative whatsoever, but I'm a firm believer in the definition of insanity. And so with that being said, we continue to have a conversation about our staff and our staff not being there. We've had a year that's been very quiet, and I'm not saying that our staff have not done anything for recruitment, but maybe it should be a larger conversation on what we can do in the future to make sure our classrooms are staffed. And so I know we will always have openings, but I just, I mean, we're talking about some very critical subjects, and we continue to have the same problem. And so what else can we do besides we're trying to feel we're doing the same thing?
That gets down to incentives and bonuses and things like that you may have to consider. So those are great things to, you know, consider going forward.
But also HR is working on some innovative ways to attract staff that will not necessarily involve bonuses or additional pay, but just different ways of bringing what we are starting to call adjunct instructors, so that we have, just like you said, Ms. Clark, getting outside of what we normally have done, what other possibilities are out there? And thank you.
Mr. Lopez, I have a question. I didn't, I asked this question earlier, so it's not a surprise, but I want people to hear this because I was asked the question. What's being done about filtration in the building in regard to PPE supplies? Again, if you could verbalize that so everybody can hear it.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I can answer the PPE supplies. Each building principal orders their PPE supplies for their campus. So they've ordered masks and any other equipment. So then as more masks are needed, they place the order with the storeroom. And in regards to the filtration system?
I answer that one, Chris. We're currently going to increase the airflow from the outside, and then we're also going to step up the changing of the filters. We change filters now twice a year. We'll be changing filters quarterly. And we're also researching these air handling units to go in each classroom. Wayne, not Wayne, Doug is currently researching what those cost. We think we can find them for like $250 a classroom, and we have over 1,000 classrooms, but that would be a good use of CARES funding to pay for the cost of those to increase the airflow in classrooms.
And another question, if someone, I said if, I didn't say they were, were to get COVID, is there CARES money to help them? Or would that individual have to rely on their sick days or their personal leave days?
There is no more CARES money. I think you're talking about the FF-CRA money that we had through December. And so we have set up and are starting a sick leave pool for classified staff. Certified staff already has a sick leave pool, and that will allow those who have low balances to appeal to that pool of available hours. So we are putting that in place, which I think is a great thing for our district to be doing. We have never had that before for classified. But yes, they would be relying on their own sick or personal days for that, but we hope that we have this additional pool available that they could appeal to that.
Dr. Miguel, I have a few questions, please. With the, so if, when people, they come back in person, have we had to modify the bus schedule so there won't be any crowding on the buses?
And I know Mr. Martin is working on that. At this point, I think, again, just a reminder that at least for April 5th, we're counting on half of our students coming, according to what parents have expressed their desire to keep their students at home or to send them to school. So at this point, we are counting on having half of the students, which would be less of a challenge. I don't know if Miguel is on the line, but I believe even when we have more students, I think routes will continue to transport the same number of students. And again, we are using all of the data that we're receiving. Students will have to wear masks who will not be able to distance. But again, we're hearing more and more than it's more important, the aspect of the mask on, and of good and reliable masks than the actual distance on the bus. Miguel, I don't know if you're on the line, if you, if you want to add anything?
I don't see him on there, Dr. Miguel. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, we'll have this conversation more.
That is the conversation we have been having. If I get any more information from him, I will share.
And secondly, you know, we all received, I'm sure, this letter about the Early Childhood Center. Have those challenges been addressed?
And we have, we received that letter today, right? So I shared it with the IIOs. I did respond to the teacher, and I think we addressed for sure the concern that they had about the nurse, because we will have a nurse in every school.
So do all of those children come back? I mean, they're not, you know, elementary, middle. What's the schedule for them? Just all of them coming?
They would be on the same schedule. When we say element, we should start saying we are including our EC children in our options, so it's EC-12.
Right. So April 5th is the target date for them too.
So does this also mean, you know, we're talking teachers, does this mean all central office, everyone will be back in person?
Yes.
And every place?
Yes.
And then finally?
Just like we, like, we are saying for school-based staff, when there is a challenge because of space, and we know that that is still a concern with adults, we are looking at each case on a case-by-case basis. So in central office or even in some schools, there may still be a need for rotation if we have lots of adults in an area that doesn't allow for the distancing. Because we are following the guidelines that, right now, we believe that children do not spread the virus at the same rate. So when we're talking about central office, we may have 20 or 30 people working in a room like this, for example, unable to social distance. So in that case, and when the work is able to be done remotely, we may have a rotating schedule. But we will all be back in person for sure before schools have everybody back.
Okay. And then my last question, for those students who do not return in person, what happens to the state assessment process?
They will have to come, they will have to come to take the assessment in person.
And they know?
So just like we, like we did ACT this week or KELPA this week, that they came into the building just for the assessment, they will have to do that.
Okay, thank you. You know, one last comment, Dr. Miguel.
Yes.
Yes, the legislature's intent is clear, but it's not written. So perhaps Bill Brady can provide us with, for lack of a better word, the conversation in the restroom, where they probably will tell their full intentions. But next week, we are at turnaround. So those bills that are coming out of the Senate, which I sent, I had, Leslie, and thank you, Ms. Smith, for sending that article about the one bill. I mean, it was, it was clear, and there's no mistake of the concern, especially about schools like KCK that are, have been remote all along. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Win. Thank you, board members. Are there any other comments, or there is an ask in front of the board regarding the two options and the recommended, recommendation from staff that was put on the floor as well? I'll revisit them just so everyone's aware. The recommended ask from, or the recommendation from staff is to have in-person four days a week, as was presented today. The other option is an updated hybrid model that was an update from the approved model that was done previously.
I make a motion that we agree to.
I make a motion that we agree to have the in-person four days a week that is recommended.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second for in-person four days a week for students at April, the April 5th date. Is there any discussion or further, further discussion or questions?
I just want to say, Dr. Miguel, if that date is too late, are you prepared to? And I guess Greg, this is a question for you too. How do we respond?
I'm sorry, what? I'm not sure I understood the question.
The motion speaks to April 5th, is that correct?
Right, because that's the day that, when students are coming back.
And question to you, Mr. Goheen, if the legislation mandates March 26th, what do we do?
Yeah, so it will depend upon what the language, what the final piece of legislation looks like, obviously. And how they intend to police that. One issue that I would be concerned about is if they're going to treat kids who are not back in person as truant. I hope they don't go that direction with it.
Right.
But if they come back and mandate March 26th and there's no wiggle room, then we're going to have to push up.
We will adjust, for sure.
It's five school days from March 26th to April 5th.
So we'll be able to adjust, yes.
I just wanted to bring that out, that.
Right, and we have been having those conversations, Dr. Winn, that, you know, we presented the plan as it was approved. We're trying to maintain the same dates because that is what we told staff and we know that they are making plans accordingly. But I think we are all in agreement that if there is new legislation, that now it's the law that students be in person, we will always comply with the law and we will make it happen.
But it needs to be, you know, verbalized, so that's why.
I appreciate the clarification because I think staff needs to hear that these are our intentions now when there is no different legislation. If legislation passes in the next few days, we will have to maybe reconvene the board for a quick meeting and act accordingly or just consult with the board.
And just one last question for Mr. Goheen. How can the state legislature kill local control?
Yeah, I mean, to me, you've got a constitutional right in your local boards to operate the school district. And so I think, you know, the state legislature can dictate certain things and they obviously do as part of their statutory process. But I think that the local control, particularly over how the schools are operated, given virus and the local health officials and everything else, this gives a real challenge to that. I hope they don't do it. I think they're going to do it. And if they do, I think we're probably going to have to adjust and get our kids back at school by the 26th and hope that at least KSDE will give us some leeway if we have parents who choose, even at that point, to not put their kids back in school, because that may happen.
Thank you.
Which makes me wonder, should we really be voting for April or should we be voting for March 26th? I mean, I don't want us to look unorganized. So it's like, you know, now you're scrambling because we already knew this could happen, but we waited for it to happen and then it did happen. So what advice do you give? Greg, I'm putting you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so my thought is that the plan that was presented to the board, the plan that has been presented to the parents and staff of the school district was April 5th. I think you should stick with that plan. But I think we all need to understand, and I think even the communication out needs to explain, the legislature may and likely will, I don't know if we want to put likely will in there, but the legislature certainly may vote to change that. And if they do, then that's going to push up what staff, when staff are going to have to be back, when the kids are going to have to be back. So there is that one week period of time, one, five, five school days, that we may have to expedite what we're doing. And so I think if the legislature goes down that path, if they pass something, I think we need to be convening a school board meeting probably the next day to talk about how you want to handle it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for great discussion and staff for the presentation and thoughtful input in putting this together. There's a motion and a second on the floor. If there are no further questions, discussion, I would ask Ms. Smith for a roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, and just want to encourage everybody to read, write your legislature because SB 235 is here, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Scott.
So with that, we're now going to hear from our Health Services Coordinator, Elizabeth Morris, then from our Human Resources team for any updates, and followed by our District Athletic Director, Tammy Romstad, for an athletics action item for your consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Morris will be with us in just a minute. Give us a couple of minutes. Some technical difficulties again, sorry about that. Do we need to have athletics go first if you guys need a couple of more minutes?
I was going to volunteer, Dr. Miguel, if you would like me to.
Okay. Ms. Morris, do you want us to do that? So that gives you a little bit more time? So, Ms. Tuschman?
Yeah, we already went through this mostly, I think, with some of the questions that were asked. But we are in the process of getting accommodation requests. And I'm sure once we go out tonight with whatever message on the new plan, we'll have probably more. I think right now we have about 40 requests. And as we stated, it's, we're asking for the medical accommodations. That's what we're looking at in hard-to-fill areas. So that's, that's basically where we're at with accommodations.
Now, when you, when you say medical requests, how detailed could it be? Because there's been discrepancies about that. So clarity, can we get some clarity on that?
Yeah, it has been clarified and we will be sending out more documentation to clarify that in several different ways. But basically, it's just as if you were filling out F and L A paperwork. Because I'm, you know, that's, that's the accommodation, or the medical accommodations we're talking about. People who cannot come back to work due to medical reasons.
So, Ms. Tuschman, we got a letter from a teacher, I guess, not a guess, a teacher, who said in essence she had to do this three times. Is that correct or is that not?
I don't know. I'm, I'm, no, I'm not sure, but I'm happy to look into it if you want me to. Let me know which one or who you're talking about, but hopefully not.
I don't remember the name. I assume, well, I assume all the board members received the same letter. So we can forward it to Dr. Miguel?
Yeah, that'd be fine. Be happy to look at it. But that's the process we're going through right now. And just like we went through last, two weeks ago, we talked about what our process would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we need a quick, quick 10-minute break, five-minute break? So it gives time?
Or do you need me to share?
What?
I'm not sure what the, what the problem is.
Sorry, just a few technical issues for those watching at home or on Zoom. We're trying to work them out here. First time we're in-person and remote, so you know, there are going to be a few, a few hiccups along the way. So we appreciate your patience so that we can make sure you get the information necessary.
So I just wanted to go ahead and present, as of right now, on March 22nd, as we stand, all school-based staff are expected to return to the school unless they have a health-related accommodation on file with HR. That may be subject to change per the conversation we had earlier based on our state legislature. And Ms. Tuschman just said considerations will be made to ensure that we have safe distance and maintained between staff and shared work areas at each school building.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, for fixing it.
I think we're going to go with.
Good evening. So as part of our continuing discussions about student reentry, I'd like to provide you with an update on how COVID is impacting our community and our district. As far as COVID numbers in the county, and you can see that for the week of February 8th through February 14th, the 70-day rolling average of cases was 24 per day and the percent positivity was 16%. As of today, I did receive an update from the Health Department that it's more like 18 cases per day and 14% positivity. So we are continuing to see a downward trend in the community. In terms of our Health Services staffing, I'd like to explain a little bit more in detail about what the needs are of the district as far as nurses. So we do need to have 44 full-time nurses on staff in order to have a nurse in every single building. Currently, we have 34 nurses who reported to work on 218. And that would have been last Monday in order to provide full staffing for this currently in terms of the student testing that began and then supporting our other students that return for connectivity. Thank you again to the board for approving that contract for us last week for the new staffing agency. We now have four nurse staffing agencies who are assisting us with finding staffing. And so we have been able to bring on an additional five full-time nurses. So we have seven long-term substitutes total and two additional starting next week. We do have one school that remains to be filled, that is an early childhood building. And so those students would not be returning until April, so we're in good shape there. But I do want to mention that even though we're very close to being fully staffed, we do have daily unscheduled absences that continue to impact our staffing. For examples, today we had four unscheduled absences. And so that, you know, on any given day, we could face that kind of a staffing pinch. And so we do have to be proactive and plan ahead for that. And so that is why we are asking these agencies to plan ahead and provide us with a few extra staff so that at 7:00 in the morning, we're not, you know, in a bad situation. And then in terms of our vaccination update, we did finish our first wave of vaccine, vaccinating our staff. And we did have 2,411 staff members who did receive their vaccine. There are some who have received their second dose. And I did receive some additional requests to, from staff to be vaccinated. And so even though we somewhat closed our window, we still will be able to make that available to our staff. And so more information will follow on that. But we will still be able to have staff who decided late that they can still receive a vaccine.
Any questions, Ms. Morris?
Thank you, Ms. Morris, for that update.
Can she break that down in terms of certified and non-certified staff?
For the vaccines, you mean?
Yeah. Is it possible to get that data? How many certified staff got it? And how many, if she can't tell me tonight, can I find that information out? And how many non-certified staff have been vaccinated?
I'll be honest, it would be very difficult for me to get that information only because I am not collecting the records of the staff who have been vaccinated. So they signed up. I didn't ask them if they were classified or certified. I just scheduled them. So it would be very difficult for me to go through that list of 2,400 to tell you for certain. It could be done, but it would be very difficult.
Okay, and then the early childhood, you said since they don't come back to April 5th, well, how soon are they going to get that person in so that they can familiarize themselves with the records and paperwork and be, when are we going to fill it?
So we do still have our staffing agencies working on getting more staff for us. So hopefully by the time I speak to you again, I'll be able to let you know that we're fully staffed.
And then you mentioned the daily unscheduled absences. I had heard at one of the schools that someone was severely ill. Do we know if, I'm not asking for a name, but I had just heard that they possibly weren't coming back.
We had several different absences today, so I guess I can't really speak to the ones specifically that you're asking about. We do have some staff who are out that may be out for a week to two weeks. And we do have some staff that could be out much longer, but those aren't counted into that report that I gave you.
Okay, so will they, the next update, will that adjustment be made so we can make sure that somebody is there at that building?
Yes, and that is why, like I mentioned in our previous board update, that we are asking to overfill with agency staff so that on any given day, when things come up, we have someone available.
Clarification, who's responsible for ensuring that there's staff in the building? That it's properly staffed? Would that be some, that's not something that the board is responsible for, right? Wouldn't Dr. Miguel be able to report that to us? Sure that there's proper staffing and coverage?
So that's part of what, what I report to you in my Friday updates, that I can give you an update on the nurses, because I know that is one concern that the board has and we have been updating as those positions are filled. Does that answer your question, Dr. Jaeger?
To clarify, I think it's very important that we do not text our staff to do additional legwork for just one. I think it's important for the board as a whole to determine what reports is needed and what we are responsible for. I think it's very important for us to stay at a high level and allow people to do what they have been hired to do and rely on Dr. Miguel to be able to filter it. In our board handbook, it says, well, for all questions and concerns, then they should go to Dr. Miguel. So I would encourage us as the board to continue to follow that practice that when situations or issues come up, regardless, we have to go through Dr. Miguel and not answer the community and address if they have concerns. We have to rely on Dr. Miguel and the staff that's put in place to be able to handle these questions. We get a number of questions from community and chain of command is very important. I see a lot of confusion that comes my way, saying, oh, I talked to this person, oh, I talked to that person. It will be very important during this time. It will be very important during this time that they, that we refer people back to the chain of command. If, if there's a building concern, principal, alert Dr. Miguel. If it's a parent concern, principal, and let them follow up. It's, I think it's very important that we understand that protocol.
And just to reassure the board that you may be hearing about nurses who are having absences or having long-term absences, and we treat those in, in the same way that we treat the absence of any staff member. If it's a school-based staff who requires a substitute teacher or a substitute person, we will work on that. If we know that it's an extended absence, we will work on a plan for how to cover, either with a long-term sub or with a plan for how we're going to support the school. So the absence of nurses, we treat them as the absence of any staff member that, that, as we have said, all of our staff is essential for the functioning of schools. So we are not neglecting any one position in favor of, of any other. We're just being very vigilant about having support and coverage for any of the positions that we need to have when students are in.
Thank you, Dr. Miguel.
You know what, I, I thank you for that information, but last year we had eight vacancies. And with this pandemic, we need to make sure that we have nurses in every building. We can't take it lightly.
And we don't, Ms. Page, and I can assure you that, Ms., Ms. Morris.
Okay, but if we, again, we're on another year. Last year was eight, back to eight, and we're working on it, but we've got to keep, make sure we do this because I don't want secretaries being the nurse.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in real quick and just continue to move us, move us along. I appreciate the conversation on both sides. I do think there is a fine line in terms of the questions that, that we ask, and I think it's important for us to ask questions. However, I also want to appreciate and say, you know, our staff are doing their due diligence and provide the updates necessary. So I, I do just want to continue to move us along. I do think our staff is working to make sure that we are fully staffed at all times. It is difficult, and specifically with our nurses right now, I think it's important, absolutely, no one's disagreeing with that. But it, it is difficult, and, and there are unplanned vacancies that I know our staff are working so hard to make sure it gets filled. And it's just, it's the nature of the beast, unfortunately, but we are working towards filling those vacancies. So I appreciate the conversation. Ms. Morris, thank you so much for the presentation and for your continued work. I know you were overworked and I appreciate the time that you put in to keep all of our staff and students safe. So thank you for tonight. So we're going to continue on and with our...
Well, Mr. Lopez, can I, can I ask Dr. Miguel a question? And it, you know, she can't answer it.
Please.
Let me ask, based on Ms. Page's question, the idea of looking at the big picture of knowing who has received the vaccine, who hasn't, how do you, I mean, how do you know, and I guess this, for me, is an HR question, maybe the nurse can't handle it, but if you have so many bus drivers that have or have not, or so many nutritional workers who have or have not, you know, for the most part, the teacher is going to be in the have category, right?
You know, we have made the vaccine available to everyone and I want to stress what Ms. Morris said that although at one point we had given a deadline to sign up, we are encouraging everyone to reach out and she's going to put a new protocol in place so that people can sign up. But I, I do not know who has taken the vaccine or not because that is...
So that's my, that's my point, kind of in a, in a management of, of health idea that, and I know you, you, you want to know, I mean, we know historically there's going to be a reluctance to the vaccine. We, we hope, some have gotten over that, some still have it. But in the, in the big picture of the system from going in another direction like to be infected, I mean, one would think you kind of have, kind of want to have a, a knowledge of how many in this department, how many in that department, that interact with kids that, you know, just want to, coming back in person, just want to stay safe. So I didn't ask you to respond, I'm just saying, one would think that could be a thought process that I don't know how to get to it if you're not schematically saying how many the bus drivers, how many nutritional workers, how many teachers, how many...
I think one of the issues you might run into is around HIPAA and protected privacy information. I think that, and that, that's a, that's a great question, Dr. Nguyen, because I think a lot of employers, especially large employers, are really trying to figure that out in terms of understanding who in their staff has been vaccinated or not and being able to, to, to continue to do business in a safe way. So I think that's a fair question and something I think it sounds like staff is working through to make sure that we have a better understanding. And, you know, we all know it's not mandated to, to take the vaccine. So it's a delicate, especially with privacy information.
Right.
But I, I appreciate that question because I think that's something we all have on our, have as well.
And we can explore that because it would be useful to know, but at this point, you know, it's really up to each individual to disclose that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we have Ms. Romstad to present an athletics update.
There we go. Good evening. President Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Miguel. The good news is we have 10 teams, five boys and five girls, that will be in postseason play, whether it's a play-in game on Saturday or hosting a substate or going to one next week. I want to remind you that our delayed season puts us at about 10 games. The opponents around us starting on time and they're at about 20 games. And so hosting a game depends on your winning percentage. So we might have a record of four and three, four and five, and there may be a team at 12 and four. And so it's coming down to tonight's games, whether we have a percentage that would allow us to host a game. So in the hope that we would actually be hosting substates, which gives our kids an opportunity to play at home, to move on into the state tournament, I have a action item to allow two spectators per participant as we host the basketball substate. The current rules do allow for the occupancy. Our gyms basically seat somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200 spectators, so we're looking at maybe 112 spectators along with the people that would be playing, the coaches, the people working the game, officers, administrators, that about 185 people, which in a gym of 1,012 seats would be easy to accommodate. We would also mark the bleachers to make it easy for families when they enter. What happens is you get a pass gate from the opponent, somebody has to be on that pass gate in order to come in. And that's how they've done throughout the state of Kansas. Everybody's done that this year. I did talk to the executive director last week, Bill Faflig, to make sure that with some of our restrictions, that we would still be able to host in the event that our kids made it that far. And he was very honest and said, your kids have earned it. If you could, if you can host it, we're going to go there. But I would strongly advise that since this is a state tournament, this is the first round that we play here, that we would consider allowing the two spectators to come in. And the nice thing is since all five schools will be in some form of either a play-in game or hosting, they would all have an opportunity to have spectators at least at one of their games. So the action item or the proposal would be that spectators be required to mask upon arrival, that we would allow two spectators per participant. I want to make sure I, the participant is the players on both teams, the coaches, any cheerleaders that you would have present, those are your participants. The other people at the game are game management, people working, so it's for the participants. This is online, which occasionally other schools are currently doing around the state of Kansas. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Romstad. So there is a recommendation in front of the board?
I don't have any questions unless someone does. I would like to make a recommendation that we move forward with allowing spectators based upon the recommendations provided tonight.
Moved and seconded. Further questions or discussion?
I just have a question, are there concessions at these games?
Based on your decision, I will have logistical meetings tomorrow, but if we do have concessions, it would be only limited to pre-contained items like water bottles, pop bottles, candies, candy, maybe chips.
Hearing no other discussion or questions, Ms. Smith, roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
And Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romstad. And good luck to all of our teams.